I'll, I'll confirm.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much. Welcome to all those that are watching via Facebook to our bi-weekly caucus meeting. You are able to comment and we will be provided with those comments for our review. So you're welcome to make comments today. We have a number of department heads with us and we're going to begin with the Controller's Office. We have somebody here from the Controller's Office, Mr. Delano.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. We have a few items on the agenda for tomorrow. First and foremost, we want to start with capital debt. Sorry, the Capital Debt Service Fund. Basically each year, as most of you know, the city set aside debt payments for the upcoming fiscal year. The Controller did file the documents with list timetable. It's going to be two payments for fiscal year 2020, 2021 for outstanding debt that's due next year. Thank you. Basically, this is the document and it shows how much is owed, the timeframe that we expect to pay it. And then the two different amounts that that will be issued paid by the city. So you can see the first payment is around 14.9 million, then the second payment, I believe, is around 27 million. So if you guys had any question, anyone had any questions in regards to this debt payment schedule? Okay, with that being said, oh, sorry, councilmember.
Board is of course awareness, right?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Is the control board aware of this?
Yes, this is every year, yes.
Okay, okay.
Just the current debt that we have.
Where's this money coming from?
Property tax.
So we have nothing from our cash flow. It said that we were at a negative 40 million. So where's this money coming from to make this payment?
This is for property tax and this is payment for next year. We already made the current year fiscal year 2020 payment. This is for fiscal year 2021 payment. So the property tax revenue that we receive next year will pay for next year's capital debt expense.
Thank you.
Just a quick.
Council President.
Thank you. So the amount on the debt, that is as what it is today? Or could that amount change by the end of the fiscal year?
To today. What wait, so you, so I'm sorry, Council President, can you say a question again?
So we are debt borrowing to close. What's the purpose of this? This is to close.
This doc, wait, this document is pertaining to debt that's going to be paid for next fiscal year. For fiscal year 2020, 2021. What you're speaking of, that's another issue, another topic, we'll, we'll discuss that also. But this is for the debt that we already have outstanding. And here's the schedule that we're going to make the payments.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Any other questions for Mr. Delano? Okay, what else do you have?
The second item that we have in regards to what Council President was accent is the revenue deficiency note. The Controller and her team, we've been meeting and the Controller asked the city's financial advisor, Rick Gancy, and also bond counsel, bond counsel, Bob Smith and Bill Jackson to hop on his call and to answer any questions that you guys might have. But as you see this document here, it's a revenue deficiency that the city is anticipating or projecting that we're going to have at the end of this fiscal year. We know that things have been going on with COVID-19 and other, other revenue shortfalls. So we're allowed by local finance law, if you have a deficiency, you're able to borrow against that deficiency. So we're asking, or we reviewed the numbers and we're looking at not to exceed 25 million. We're not projecting that we're going to have a $25 million loss. But what we, our action is that if we can, it's time constraints on this agreement to get this filed, to get this approved by the council. But like I said, we do have our Rick Gancy on the line. We also have Bob Smith and we also have Greg and Bill from Controller's Team to answer any questions that you guys have in regards to this deficiency note.
I, I, I have one question on the deficiency note. What is the, your projection and what is the administration's? I mean, I, my understanding, they were projecting, yes.
But that's tied into another item we're going to talk about. We, when we initially, when we initially did, when Controller Team did the third quarter gap response, we initially projected to show a shortfall of $24 million for the city of Buffalo. Administration, I believe, they, they were showing 15 million. And our numbers was as of, actual numbers as of May 15. So we went back and reviewed our actual numbers and we were able to put data, actual numbers as of June 1st. So when, when we reran our numbers, we're projecting now to have a shortfall of $18 million instead of 20, instead of $24 million. And that's primarily due to, we were too conservative with the sales tax revenue. We more, after we ran it, we said, we're going to receive more sales tax revenue than we originally anticipated. And also, we were over in the parking transfer in money. I think we was over by almost like $800,000. So basically, sales tax was understated on our projection and parking revenue was understated.
Okay. Questions regarding how you come to your conclusion? When you look at the city's projections and what you project, how far are you normally off? I mean, are you, is there a tendency to be more on the controller's side? Or is there a tendency to be more on the city's side or the administration's? I'm just trying to get an idea because if they project 15 million, you project 18 million. Based on your past, where does it normally lie? Does it lie on the controller's side or is it lie on the administration? I hope in this case, it's on the administration's side because they, they're projecting only $15 million versus 18 million.
Yeah, Bill, you want to speak there?
Hi, it's Bill Ferguson, the city accountant. Normally, we, just by our nature, we do project conservatively. And that's just, I think who we are as accountants, it's better to err on the side of, of understating revenue, overstating expenses, but we do that in a conservative fashion. We don't try to go overboard. Historically, in the past, with our budget responses and gap reports, the actual results have approximated what we have projected. But with the caveat with COVID-19, everything's off the table. I mean, we were, we're making assumptions, we're trying to predict the future of what might happen with revenues coming in. But due to COVID, the administration is doing the same and without any, no one's ever been through this before. So I think it's, we're both giving it our best effort.
Okay. And then finally, with regards to the projections, does the controller work hand in hand with the administration in terms of information? Because there's sometimes there's disparity between both. Do you work with the administration when you're coming up with these projections? Are they providing, providing you information that you need?
The Controller's Office will be with the, we usually do meet with the administration to go over some of our differences and sometimes, especially in the past, we just agree to disagree.
Okay, thank you.
But as Bill stated, there's communication between the two groups. But we do our review, we do our review and then administration, their finance team, they do their review. And we'll meet with Commissioner Asherich and say, okay, here's what we're saying. And then she'll explain to us why she's saying what she's saying. But we're not going to change our numbers based off their numbers and normally they change their numbers based off of what we're saying. Like you stated, we hope we're wrong. But we, based off our review, here's, here's what we're projecting for us, that 18 million dollar shortfall.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm concerned because the numbers they're basing this 5% off of 509 million. And we don't know what our total revenues are going to be, the actual revenues are going to be. So are we putting ourselves in a deeper hole, guesstimating on $500 million, which we're not going to bring in this year? So should that number even be lowered? I mean, I know we're basing it on budget, but if I'm going to approve a loan for someone, I'm not basing it on what they're telling me they think they're going to bring in. I'm bringing on historical information that they can show me that they've shown the ability to pay. So we're basing it on 5% of 509 million and we're not going to bring anything close to 509 million. Why are we basing on that number?
Well, that's, that's part of, and I believe, count, we do have bond counsel here that can confirm. That's part of local finance law where they allow, when you have a revenue deficiency, they allow the, in the company who are the municipality to borrow up to 5% of their actual budget. So the budget that was approved for this current fiscal year was 509 million. So you could take automatic borrow up to 5% of that.
Okay, who's bound counsel, who's the bound counsel person?
Bob Smith or Bill?
Yeah, yeah, the, 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 the law authorizes it exactly what Delano, what Delano said. You, you look at the actual budget and that's your maximum. It's not the amount that you will borrow. It's not the amount you have to borrow, but that's the max it's set by, by law. However, the city cannot borrow more than, and will not borrow more than what they actually project the deficit to. So that's whether it's 13, 15, or 18, some other number.
So, so, so my concern is that we're going to borrow today because we have a deficiency today. And then we're going to borrow an additional amount for next year. Those are two different amounts, of course. But does it put us in a deeper hole? Because again, my point being, we're projecting 509 million, but we're absolutely not going to bring in 509 million. So next year, we built, we budgeted 519 million. So are you telling me we're going to borrow that amount too? And then not only do we have a deficiency this year, we also have a deficiency going into a deficiency for next year. So we're going to be deeper in debt with revenues that aren't coming in to the extent that we would like them to. So just, I'm just concerned. And so that's one point. The other point is, how closely are you working with the control board? Because that's my ultimate concern is, is that we put ourselves in a position where they trigger a hard control board because we are so in debt and we haven't made the necessary adjustments for us to manage our expense with the limited revenues that we have.
Well, well, first to answer that second question, we have had contact with Jeanette at the Control Board. We put on a radar that this is something that the city was looking to do. We know on these previous calls, we've been discussing this revenue deficiency note. To the first question, I think, are you good, are you okay with that response or anything else on that?
No, no issues.
And then the second one, I mean, the first question was in regards to next year. I mean, we, we're concerned just as much as everybody else on this call. And we don't know where we're going to fall next year. At the end of the day, this deficiency is based off this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2019, 2020. We're trying to close the year out and then next year, we know everything in this current budget that you guys just passed is on everybody's radar. We'll monitor throughout the year. Hopefully, we don't need, we don't have a deficiency next year when it comes to revenue. But that's something that we have to worry about next year. We'll look at it month to month, have communications with everybody on this call. But right now, we're trying to close this current fiscal year out. And that's what this deficiency is in regards to fiscal year 2019, 2020.
I mean, I've not been in a situation like this. However, I think, you know, unfortunately, we weren't able to meet with the Control Board last week to get some guidance. I mean, we're trying to go with what we're given. But certainly, at the, at the end of the day, it's the Control Board that has a lot of influence. And I'm very disappointed that they did not meet with us or we're not having some additional conversation with them. In addition with the administration and the Controller's Office. We're at a critical point and you all are giving us, these are timed, timing issues. Well, we need some information from them solidifying the decision that we're making. Because I don't want next year or in six months that we all of a sudden have a control board on our neck because we have not been able to get the information that we need to make good decisions. The administration has submitted a letter and I just, I just saw it on, on the Control Board's website. But none of us from the council has gotten it. Did you all get the letter from the administration about their plans?
No. Just, just, just to speak to what you're saying, I think the Controller and her team, along with Rick, Bob and Bill, we're comfortable. I mean, as far as the numbers that we're reviewing, I mean, we can work with the Control Board, with the Council, we can work with administration. But I think we have enough experience and knowledge to provide any accounting guidance to anybody on this call. With or without the Control Board.
Well, I, I appreciate your confidence in you all and I, and believe me, I don't second guess you. But at the end of the day, the Control Board makes their decisions and we need to hear from, I, I'm just going to say, speak for me. I need to hear from them as a finance chair that we're taking the right direction to make sure we guard ourselves, number one, from the higher control board because we want to do what we need to do as elected officials. But number two, that we're getting the best information so we can make those decisions. Because we have, still have a $65 million hole in our budget for next year.
The 65, remember, the 65 millions for next year. We're trying to close out this year.
Delano, I hear you. I'm just making my comment. I heard what you're saying and I agree, I understand that clearly. However, if we're making a, a take on debt for this year that we have to, as you stated, could close this year out. And then we have additional debt for next year. And we've been given this, this scenario that we're going to get this money. I don't see it. And so I want to know, how do we manage this? If we do have to go to the extreme and get from what was proposed, $52 million for next year? You know, we need to know the if, the, the worst case scenarios. I don't want to hear the sunny sunshine that we're going to get this. I want to know as a finance person, what those other scenarios are. Because it's about, how do we minimize risk? How do we make certain that the decisions that we make are going to help us along the way and not make us, put us in a deeper hole? That's where I'm coming from. A lot of us aren't finance professionals. And so we're lending, leaning on you all to give us the best information. But at the end of the day, I want to make certain that the Control Board is comfortable and is in concert. Because we told a lot of things a lot of times and we have no valid information. Again, there was a document provided about the contingency and we have not gotten that document. So that's where I'm concerned. There's nothing against you all, not saying that you're not giving us good information. But there's a contingency in place about $52 million borrowing and none of us have been given that information. So that concerns me because again, it speaks to us not being transparent and sharing the information so that we can make sound decisions. Nobody isn't saying that anybody is against anybody. I'm just saying collectively, we should be sitting down and talking and sharing this information to where we are or what we have to do. Because I'm, I'm good with us having to do what we have to do. Because at the end of the day, we have to close out this, the, the year end, right? Take that, we have to borrow that money, there's no other two ways about it. So that's step one. But how does that affect us if we have to go to the maximum or to the extreme for the additional borrowing for next year with the borrowing that we have to do this year? Because the amount that we, you put is a maximum of 25 million. But we, the, the number was told to us, it was supposed to be 15, correct?
Well, to pass the 15, best from administration standpoint. Only got borrowed when the numbers are final and then that'll determine if it's 15, it's 18, 17, whatever the case may be. But right now, this resolution you have, it says borrow up to, not to exceed rather, $25 million. So we'll see once the numbers are final. But right now, our, our main concern is having every, we, we have to have this done by June 30.
But we have to approve this by June 30th? What are you saying?
We have to have everything complete by June 30.
Okay.
It's still, it's still a process. This is just for you guys to approve the resolution. We still have to go to market and we also have Rick Gancy on air. He could speak more far as the terms of the agreement. But it's, and we kind of like, I got our backs against the wall right now.
Okay, can you, can you give us, is Rick, can you give us the terms, Rick?
Yeah, sure. So we've been, in the course of the last few weeks, we've been working with JP Morgan Chase Bank to negotiate a private placement, if you will, with, with the bank to purchase the deficiency notes and to be held in their portfolio. Our goal, obviously, with this resolution, will allow the city to move forward with those negotiations with Chase to close on the transaction and fund the deficiency by June 30th of this month, pursuant to local finance law. That note, at this point, is going to mature 18 months out, which is in December of 2021. At which time, the city can either renew that deficiency note or convert it to long-term bonds if permitted under local finance law.
So is there, is, is additional legislation required to extend that?
Currently, the, the local finance law legislation allows for up to two years from the original term. So if needed, you could, you know, we would, you know, run that out to June 30th of 2022. In order to convert it to a long-term bond, under, under, you know, local finance law, you would require what's called deficit bond financing, which would require special state legislation to convert that to long-term bonds. And that would allow for a 10-year term. There's also legislation that is, has been drafted, not just for Buffalo, but for, you know, all municipalities in the state to allow for a long-term deficiency bond up to 15 years. At the, at the moment, you know, as of now, there's no sponsors that we know of for that particular bill. But we're hopeful that between now and December of 2021, that, that either that legislation gets approved or the city would get deficit bond legislation, you know, as permitted by the state.
Who typically would you work on with, who typically would you be contacting from the state to work on something like that?
Bill or Bob, you want to talk about that?
Well, in terms of a sponsor for the bill, no one in particular. We just have to go through the, the normal legislative course in the Assembly and the Senate. We, we have had discussions, and this is in terms of, you know, distinction between deficit bond legislation, which would be Buffalo only, which we, something that probably should get started maybe during the spring of next year, if we don't have something else in place. The other possibility is the law that, that, that has been drafted, as Rick mentioned, which would apply to all municipalities, which were authorized as it's drafted right now, up to 15 years. That has been discussed with the State Controller's Office. I know the Controller's Office has been in touch with whoever they think appropriate in, on both sides of the legislature. But I, I, as Rick said, I'm not aware of anyone who's a sponsor of that bill right now.
Do you, do you, do you think that's a heavy lift right now? I mean, it just seems like it shouldn't. I mean, it just seems like it was something that we definitely need to do. Especially that Washington is saying that they're not going to give us the funding, the stimulus funding that we definitely need. So it seems like you would think that they would be in, in support of something to extend it out 15 years if possible, if needed.
Yeah, I certainly would, political, you know, sort of estimate here as to how likely it is. So I apologize for that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. The, I, I mean, I, I'm hearing everything that my colleague is talking about. And I think many on this call are concerned about the heaviness of borrowing and the borrowing again. It has the, the city would be the one, obviously, in this scenario, borrowing the money, correct? Not the Control Board?
Correct, the city.
Now, the control, am I right or wrong that the Control Board did offer to do the borrowing? Because their, their rating is better and it might be at a different interest rate or am I incorrect?
I'm sorry.
I, I don't know, I don't know that the Control Board has, they, they have in the past on other bond issues and, and by anticipation notes, but I'm not aware of them offering that for this particular transaction.
Yeah, to my knowledge, Councilmember President, to my knowledge, with this revenue deficiency note, I don't, I'm pretty sure we did. I don't think we reached out to Control Board. I think with your references, when we did a refund, they were willing to go, go on our behalf.
Right, but the question is, if we are going to borrow and that borrowing is going to have interest and the Control Board's credit rating is better than the city's, which would give us a better rate? Would we, do we normally just wait on the Control Board to contact us? Or should there some, be some reaching out to the Control Board so that this debt is less for the future?
Okay.
This is Greg Smanzki. So I know the Control Board is aware of the current situation. I mean, I don't believe they have the intention of, at this point in time, of borrowing on the city's behalf. But, you know, certainly when we get the terms and stuff finalized, we can share that with them and see if, if there's an opportunity for them to do it. But at this particular time, I don't think there is, you know, they haven't expressed any interest in doing it on, on our behalf, that I'm aware of, anyway.
But have, but, so here's my, my concern and, and the reason why I think Finance Chair and others are very concerned about it. Because we, we don't know that. We, we, there has been no conversation, it sounds like. There hasn't been any reaching out to them. And this, we're, we're not talking about 20,000, we're talking about millions, tens of millions of dollars. That interest rate could be very different. And it doesn't, from what I understand, it does not then trigger a higher control board. But I think the, the kind of thought of, I'm not sure, they didn't reach out. I, I, yeah, that makes me a little uncomfortable. Because if we can get this money for less, I think that we shouldn't be waiting for them to reach out. I think that we should be looking at how we, that, that we, that someone should be reaching out to them. I don't think that that's usually the counsel, from my past experience. It's not the counsel that reaches out. But I think that if, if the counsel does have to reach out, that somebody needs to reach out. There needs to be multiple things that we can look at, but we definitely need to keep the interest rate down. So it, I think, and, and again, I'm with Councilmember Wyatt. I'm pretty disappointed that last week, when we were supposed to hear, and then from the Control Board, well, they were supposed to have a meeting, they didn't. Now, we are dealing with tens of million dollars of debt that could roll down for 10 years or two years. And if it's only two years, how we pay that debt back and what gets cut later? I can't act like we shouldn't be concerned about it. So I do have concerns that the Control Board has not been involved in talking about the borrowing. From a document that I was sent, I, I really thought that what I read was that the Control Board, and I know, matter of fact, let me say this, I believe it was supposed to be talked about last week when the Control Board's meeting was canceled. Now, back this up against the wall, and I'll just be very honest, to me, that's not, I, I was almost ready to move on this until hearing that the Control Board has not, we don't know. And at the end of the day, this is debt for a long, long time possibly, or for a very short time that taxpayers have got to pay back. And we should be getting the best rate for them, especially if it's two years that we can. I'm concerned.
Rick Smanzki?
So one of the other points, I think, and, and Rick can probably talk about this a little bit more is, I mean, if, if the Control Board did issue a short-term note, there is additional cost of issuance that goes, goes into that. So that could, you know, if, if, if the cost was, you know, there, if, if they had some interest savings, it might be eaten up by the, the cost of issuance.
Thanks, Greg. I'm sorry, Chairman. Thanks. But I think we're, we're dealing in a time with so much money that we've got to see. And I know you are an expert on this and, 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 and give us the most accurate information that you can. But I'll be clear, if I, if I had the opportunity to borrow from two different banks or two different ways, based on either my credit or my wife's credit, I want to try them both so that I could see which one I'm going to get the best bang for because I got to pay it back every month. And I think when we're talking about the responsibilities of the city's finances, unless there is a reason that the Control Board says, we don't, we don't even want to be in this mix, then they need to say it, it needs to be in writing. We, we, we should see it as a counsel because I was informed by at least one Control Board member that they, they would possibly be interested. Let me ask it a different way. Who would be the one to reach out to the Control Board to even see if they would do the borrowing?
Probably would be, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, I, it would, it would probably be the, the Controller's Office. So we would, you know, reach out to them and, and discuss it.
Okay, so I know, Mr. Dial, you're representing, well, all of you are representing Controller. Is that something that could happen so that we can see what the best case scenario should be for, for the city of Buffalo?
Well, if, if that's needed, I mean, like I said, time is of essence. So I know Greg did reach out to Jeanette. Well, if, if that's needed, I mean, like I said, time is of essence. So I know Greg did reach out to Jeanette, uh, at the control board to let him know, uh, what we still, and what, what we were looking to do. Um, I believe, uh, Rick might have.
Yeah, I just might, maybe I just add that, uh, when the city comes to the market every year for capital projects, whether it's a bond anticipation note or long-term bonds, the control board, you know, under the act, does opine as a board with respect to the structure of the financing, as well as the, the pricing of financing. So the control board does an independent analysis of what they could get by way of interest expense versus what might be received, uh, as the, as the city. So, um, I would imagine that they would schedule a meeting, um, at some point, um, to discuss, you know, the, the, the differences in rates. They were supposed to talk about it, I believe, at the last meeting, but obviously that was postponed. So it's certainly something that Greg and, and Delano and the staff at the controller, the controller's office has been, you know, in discussions with Jeanette and her staff with respect to what we're trying to accomplish here.
And, and I think that, so because our backs are up against the wall, I still don't think that it is time then until the control board has said whether they can borrow at a better rate. So this council is informed of what that rate might be. Um, because again, I was under the impression, all of these conversations had happened. Um, and it is concerning, because the control board isn't like they're, um, you know, in Spain. They're local, right? I mean, the members of the control board are local and could call a special meeting, especially in light of the city's finances. And again, we know that COVID has a lot to do with this, but we've been meeting and we, we've had to call special meetings, and this is a big, huge, huge decision. And to me, and, and if the, if the council, and I'm only one on the council, but I, I do, I do believe that if the council has to get involved in asking the control board, hey, meet, hey, give us something, hey, tell us yes, no, go to hell, whatever it is, tell us. But at the end of the day, if we have nothing and we're just going now to move, because I think you all should still keep moving. But at the end of the day, I don't think we should be, you know, as far as your paperwork, as far as getting everything ready, but so should the control board. So we have a, if they're going to say no, we need to hear from them. That's my only point. And, and I don't mind reaching out to the control boards, um, and, um, for, uh, next Tuesday, for finance, to be able to say, we need to hear, or a special meeting. At the end of the day, it's huge, and I'm very uncomfortable in what I'm hearing.
Councilmember Dolanbeck, then Councilmember Scanlon?
You're muted, council member.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dowell mentioned that our backs are against the wall. What, um, what did you mean by that?
Our, the, the time constraint, and we have to have this deal closed by June thirtieth. So that's why I said our backs is against the wall. I said, which is something where we're trying to get done. I understand, uh, council member, uh, president, uh, concerns. We will work after this call, uh, try to get something, uh, set up with, um, the control board, so we get something in writing, uh, to put you guys at ease. As stated, we, we've reached out to them. If the meeting got canceled last week, I mean, that's kind of out of our control. Uh, we know they're looking at the numbers just like we are. Uh, so we'll work with them, we'll reach out to them. Hopefully, uh, we have Greg or Bill, uh, or the controller, set something up with them, get something in writing. If they need to meet with you guys, hopefully they can, uh, meet with you, but it, we're just, we're just trying to get this done, so we can keep, uh, keep the city going from a finance perspective.
All right, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't have anything to do with us postponing the budget by two weeks, because I still think that we made a mistake in doing that. Um, and, uh, you know, because we ended up having basically the same results, we had the same budget. Uh, it could have been done two weeks earlier and it would have given us, um, a little bit more cushion. Thank you.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Thank you, Majority Leader. Um, I don't know if this question is for Greg or Bill or Delano or Rick or Bob, whomever it might be. But, um, obviously, this is all predicated upon and dependent upon how much the actual gap ends up being in this current year. And the question I have is, the costs associated with the control board doing the borrowing, would those eliminate any benefit of the lower interest rate? Would it, would they offset? I know, obviously, it's dependent upon what the actual number ends up being. What is the, are the costs associated that great? Or they would eliminate that benefit of the lower interest rate?
Yeah, I'll take that. You know, for, for such a short-term, uh, note, you know, we're talking about only an eighteen-month, um, essentially an eighteen-month note. Each year, the control board does an independent analysis, and it really turns out to be, you know, either break even or, or slightly, you know, a little bit better on the control board side. But this last time around, the city did a bond anticipation note, it actually, uh, the city's rate that they received, you know, was more favorable than what the control board had projected by way of interest expense. So, um, it's on the margins. And, you know, each year, they do an independent analysis, and, um, the state does quite well on its own in the, in the public credit markets, you know, given it's, you know, underlying strong rating, uh, as it exists today.
Okay, thanks, but I think that several of my colleagues who are asking questions about the control board, I think that is, um, important that we do find out the information from them then, so we can compare the two, obviously.
Council President?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to respond about the two weeks, um, and whether it affected, um, this. I want to be clear. When we, when we asked the commissioner, when we asked the control board, I mean, the controller's office, would this affect borrowing? We were told no, that they could start the paperwork and started what they needed to do, even though we were going for two weeks. So the, the thought of, and, and I respect my council member, uh, for asking it, but I want to be clear that when we moved it down the road, we were told that it wouldn't be no different than if we voted on it two weeks before. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Majority Leader. At the end of the day, I'm going to say very loud and very clear. They put me in a position of leadership regarding the finances of the city. I take it seriously. I don't want to have under my belt that I was a part of a control board when it's not necessary. We put in our time, we ask the questions, we get the information, and then we make good decisions. That's where I come from. You make good decisions, and we have a team here, and I think all of us being a part of that conversation could be hugely helpful. I'm not having conversations in a silo without anybody being a part of the conversation and know where we are. But I think when we decide not to include other people, especially people that can make a decision about soft or hard control board, I think we're being foolish. So I think the, the role that I'm taking, and I think that I'm trying to take the council down, is most appropriate to get the information from the people who have the final say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dowell? Are there any other items that you need to speak on, Mr. Dowell?
No.
No other questions? No other questions, we'll move on with the next item on the agenda. We'll have Public Works on. Is Commissioner Quinn there?
There he is on, I believe he may have walked away from his computer for a moment. We also have Brendan Mahappy from Strategic Planning.
Brendan Mahappy?
Good afternoon, Mike Finn's here, I'm sorry.
Oh, Mike, sorry, back to Mike Finn. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, for Public Works, uh, we just have, uh, four, four items, uh, in front of you. Uh, I, I think the biggest one, it's a renewal of the Buffalo Place Rotary Rink Agreement. Uh, that's an agreement that we have with Buffalo Place for the services that they provide for the city, uh, which includes, uh, in large part, the operation of the Rotary Rink. Uh, there's no changes, uh, to this proposed, um, renewal of the agreement, uh, except for some, uh, map changes to include new improvements that the city's made since the last agreement, uh, which includes, uh, the improvements around the Genesee Gateway, uh, as well as some, uh, park improvements, I believe, at, uh, at Fireman's Park. Uh, I'll open up for any questions that you have.
Council President?
Hey, thanks, uh, uh, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner. This is a question, as we are talking about finances, I know this is a small drop in the bucket, but would this, if in fact, that there has to be a contingency plan for next year, does this contract give us an out if we, uh, had to start cutting, uh, different things? Or does this, uh, lock us in, um, regardless of what the budget looks like, um, going forward?
I'm not positive. Is, uh, Andy Rab on the call? If he's not, I will, uh, check in with him. He, he's the one who principally negotiates this renewal, and I can get that answer for you, Council President. I can, uh, send an email if that's okay.
Oh, that's fine, and, and I'm not against this at all. I just think that as we're going into this next budget year, that as many contracts as possible should have an out, so that, um, that's, you know, based on whether that's our revenues or whatever it is, so that our hands are not tied. Um, if we have to come up with contingency, I would, although I don't, you know, I hate to say this, I'd rather see something like this go by the wayside than, than a, a service, uh, to the people. And so I think we need to examine contracts closely, um, mu- much more closely to make sure we have an out. Thanks.
Yep, I will follow up on that for you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions for the Commissioner? No questions. Mr. Mahappy?
Yes, thank you very much, uh, council member. Uh, I'm here to, uh, talk about the, um, legislative item that's before you. The, uh, small business social distancing strategy. Um, this focuses on allowing small businesses in the city of Buffalo, primarily during this summer, uh, we hope, certainly, uh, to utilize exterior space, that being privately owned property and also, uh, public property sidewalks and streets, uh, to, uh, make up for, um, space that they might have lost within their existing establishments within the buildings, or even the, uh, exterior space that they have through a sidewalk cafe or something of that nature. So, uh, this is, uh, obviously something that's, um, many municipalities have been pursuing around the country. Um, and, uh, City of Buffalo, um, working with the council members, um, has now come up with a specific, uh, ordinance to, uh, give this some structure. Uh, hopefully, it is familiar to many of you. It was based upon, um, the special events ordinance. This is not a special event. Um, this is for a very specific purpose, but the structure, which created a committee, which includes representation from the council, uh, seems a, a good structure, um, and it was changed just to be able to act a little bit more expeditiously, uh, so that we could move as fast as possible for small businesses in the city of Buffalo, which I think many of you know, um, are, uh, really struggling right now. And we want to do what we can to make sure, uh, that they are, they're not only for this summer, but also future summers as well. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions about, uh, the, the legislation that's before you.
Any questions for?
Yes.
For a little?
Yes, first, I just want to thank, um, all of my colleagues on the council. I think the majority of us, if not all of us, have co-sponsored this. We all got behind a resolution a few weeks ago, and this essentially puts it into an ordinance. I want to thank the administration for their help. I, I know Brendan, um, did a very quick job, and we put together a group of twenty different restaurants from all over the city of Buffalo to come up with an expedited application, which essentially will allow restaurants to expand their outdoor space. And this is extremely important when Phase Three does start, which maybe on June sixteenth, restaurants are likely going to have a limited capacity of twenty-five or fifty percent. So this will give restaurants the ability to serve people, serve more people outside safely, following the social distance guidelines, and we know restaurants have been closed since March fifteenth. Some of them have been open for takeout. They're extremely important to the local economy. There are so many people in Erie County working in the food and service industry, about fifty thousand people. So this is very important to help our small businesses, and I just want to thank everyone's, everyone's support for this and all of the hard work that everyone put into this.
Great work. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Brendan. Are there any other commissioners online right now that, um, if not, we'll start, uh, from the top? Okay, items one, two, and three are receive and file. Item four, extended contract. This item is open. There's someone here to speak on this item? If there are no objections, uh, to the extension of the contract, motion is to approve. And number five is an allocate report of sale of various lots on, on Bus Day Avenue, allocate district.
I'm sorry, can you, uh, just leave that open until tomorrow, sir?
Okay, item's open, leave it open. Uh, Controller, item five, finance. Six, let's see, item, item six, debt service, finance, seven, receive and file. Eight, approve. Nine is an approve, ten is an approve, eleven, receive and file. Items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen are approved. Sixteen and seventeen, civil service. Item eighteen, it's a finance, that's the contract for security at City Hall, uh, that's going to finance. Uh, Police Department asked that we send it to finance. Nineteen?
Councilmember, uh, Mr. Wyatt is trying to get your attention.
Excuse me, Mr. Wyatt?
Majority Leader, those two items, um, we, we're not going to send them both to finance, because the, the deficiency note, I would like to have a conversation with the control board before we approve that I own.
Okay, so why don't we then go back to those two items and send them to finance?
Yes.
And we're hoping Mr. Dowell can get us the information quickly.
And, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, and so that the controller's office knows, you know, we stand, once we get that information, the council can go into special session very quickly, um, to make a decision. So I have, I would like to, uh, make that commitment that as long as we have five council members, we would go into a special session if we needed to. Um, but we just need that bit of information.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, where are we now? What item are we on?
Mr. Dowell just wanted to make a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, we've already put a call out to, uh, the control board, so as soon as we get information from them, you'll have it. We're looking to have it no later than hopefully tomorrow or Wednesday at the earliest. So, uh, we're definitely on that.
And if you can, if you can find out the interest, um, as Council President asked for, um, doing it through your office in the interest, doing it through the control board. We just know the interest rates as well and the cost.
A breakdown, yes, we'll, we'll have, we're on it.
Thank you. Back to the, uh, let's see, where do we leave off?
We're on item nineteen, sir.
Nineteen approved, twenty approved, nineteen through twenty-four are receive and file. Excuse me, no, nineteen and twenty are approved. Twenty through twenty-four are receive and file. Twenty-five is an allocate. BN, BN, strategic planning, CDVG and ESG spending, allocate district.
Um, I believe it could just be received and filed, or it can go, if someone wants it to go to, um, a committee, it can.
Anybody, any objections to it being receive and file? Okay, motion to receive and file. Resolutions. Item twenty-six, this is paralelles. Uh, this is an adopt.
Yeah, that's the one we just went over. We talked about Brendan.
Great work on that, Joe. Twenty-seven.
Is this, this says four-one-four special events. That's not a resolution, that's ordinance amendment.
Ordinance amendment?
It's on the resolution, but it's an ordinance amendment.
So it's a proper, adopt. Approve, should be the motion, not a adopt, just because it's an ordinance amendment.
I have another question, usually, and I guess this is for Councilmember Farrelletto. Um, was this signed for immediate approval? Because usually our ordinances get sent to legislation. That's the normal process under the, um, the chapter, the code.
I have not spoke, um, I have not spoken with the administration, but I think I've reached out to them to see if we can get this for immediate passage, because I know- I reached out to them to see if we can get this for immediate passage, because I know the governor on Friday, I believe, said that outdoor dining could start. So I think it's in the best interest to have this for immediate passage. So I will certainly reach out to someone in the administration right after this. Thank you for pointing that out.
Sure, thank you.
Let's see, twenty-seven.
This is an inquiry. I know that in the past, there has been an inquiry into the Carol Horn situation to the Attorney General. We now have a different Attorney General, and I think a whole set of different circumstances. I want to be clear that in the past, there's been a lot of work that has gone forward. And I'll say this again tomorrow, a little bit, but I'll be brief, from the administration, from myself and others who were present, literally going through Carol Horn's retirement records, because there is a dispute between the dates that she says should be counted and others. So I thought it was better to take it to a higher level. And especially in the fact of some of the changes that we're making globally in policy and procedure. And this was really something I thought was important, and that the community has thought was important. So I would ask that because of the timing of this, that it doesn't go to the committee, but that it would be approved.
Any other comments? Councilmember Wyatt?
You're muted, Councilman. Councilmember Wyatt, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Council President, for putting this forth. As I've gone through the community, we've heard so much about Carol Horn and trying to get her her pension. The very thing that we've asked for and that we've seen and we want our police to do in intervention of situations and where they may be abusing a person. We want a good officer to take action. So for her to be given her pension, I definitely support. If they can look into that, and definitely, whatever situation needs to be adjusted. Because this woman, just like Kellin Kaepernick, was looked at as a a negative person or someone that did something wrong. But now, looking at it today, she did something right. And I will hope that we can do something to make her whole. Because sometimes we do things at a moment in time that is not very popular. But today, people seeing what she's done and what others who intervene in situations such as this are heroes and doing what they're called to do to protect and serve. So I definitely want to be added in support of this effort. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Motion is to, is this an approval?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty, twenty-eight.
On twenty, twenty-eight, if I can, Mr. Chair, there was, there was an amendment. And I know that it came late. I want to thank Councilmember Wingo. I was told just a few minutes ago that his head has been in the books, and that's a good thing. He also added to this to even take it further than than where it was. Because we do have a policy, but we want to make sure that all police officers know that policy and know that they are to assist in situations. We also want that policy to be looked at, to be amended as needed, and that it be reported back to the council, and that every police officer would be trained again on the duty to intervene within the next thirty days. Thank those who will support.
Any other Councilmember? Councilmember Wingo, and then Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you. Just want to say that I want to appreciate this resolution, and that I would like to be added to this resolution as well, so that police officers who have done what Carol Horn did twelve plus years ago, they will be protected in the future and without fear of repercussion. So please, sir, add me to this great resolution. And I want to just commend my colleague for drafting this up in such a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I echo my colleague's comments and would like to be added to the resolution as well.
Thank you very much. Council President, you can add me to the resolution as well. I've worked in the Buffalo Police Department, and I know it's a hard job and the stress that police officers go through, especially when they're in incidents like Carol Horn was in twelve years ago. It's unfortunate that this wasn't handled a lot sooner, and justice would have prevailed. As we all know, the history of this case, the officer at the center of this case has since been, I believe, arrested and indicted. And to go back and look at this and have the state Attorney General take a look at this, and the training that should always go on. I mean, once you graduate from the academy, there is training that goes on continually in the Buffalo Police Department. And I believe this is the type of training that officers need to go back, whether it's use of physical force, whether it's use of deadly physical force, whether it's de-escalation, whether it's making sure police officers train to stop another police officer when they're not using proper, the proper amount of physical force. So I agree with this, and I hope she's made whole at some point, and we can put this behind us. Thank you very much, Council President. Council, Councilmember Noakowski, and then Councilmember Wingo.
Majority Leader, you can, you can add me too, please.
Okay, Councilmember Wingo.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say one quick thing about this particular policy in the police policy. This is a, this is an issue that has been plaguing, I guess, the entire nation, first of all. The duty to intervene, as well as the level of force that is disproportionate to this situation that people find themselves in. So my point is, even after we have put in the policy and made it very, very clear of what each officer should do, we still have to trust that those officers will do the right thing. That's number one. Number two, if, in fact, the police union chooses to defend bad behavior, it doesn't matter what amount of policies we put in place, it's still going to give us and render the same results, even without the policy. I would like to see some reforms in how the police union is able to pick and choose who they defend and who they don't defend. Now, that's some legislation I'd be willing to work on, if that's even possible. I'm going to make sure that our Corporation Council, that we work together on that. And I'm pretty sure I have some colleagues in here who we will all sign under that resolution. But I really think that it's high time for us to really acknowledge where the problem is. The first problem is with police officers who use disproportionate amounts of force, even though they have the right to use excessive force. They're using a disproportionate amount of force or a level of force that is not proportionate to the circumstance, number one. And number two, we really have to address the fact that we have a police union who is celebrating the I'm gonna stop. Yep, I'm gonna stop. Thank you, Mr. Joe, those are my comments.
Okay. We'll move on then. Thank you very much. Okay. Policy for police. So the item would be, is, would that be a an adopt or an approve?
That should be an adopt as well, right? Those are all resolutions.
So Majority Leader, just to confirm, item twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, after discussion, should be adopt. They're all resolutions.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, adopt.
Thank you.
Thirty, thirty-one are adopt.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On twenty-nine, so this is a resolution that would, that is requesting a, basically an ad hoc task force that would work along with the advisory board to the council and any other pertinent parties that the administration council would see fit to begin looking at all of the policies currently of the Buffalo Police Force. I will say this, when I did write this, I was, and I've only been made aware of this, I said a few minutes ago, that Councilmember Wingo has started doing a in-depth analysis. So I think that some of that information may already start being formulated, but this gets us, as was just said, working together so that we do not have to do one policy at a time, but we are able to bring a reform agenda forward. So for those who support, a thank you in advance.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to be added to this as well. And I just want to say, thank you, Council President, for your leadership on this. I do think that we need to have a conversation. All of us coming to the table, because we know we need police. And for those people who send these letters to defund police, I cannot agree with you. Because in my community, there are, there was a murder just this past couple of days ago. And the neighbors in that community were so shaken. And I can't imagine not having an officer or having police in those communities. You know, the great majority of the letters that we're getting aren't from the communities I represent. You know, these are people who, they may have some crime, but not to the extent that we have in our neighborhood. And so we know we need the police. So I'm so appreciative of us having this dialogue, because at the end of the day, we need each other. Nobody should be against and destroying the police, just like we don't want bad police, but the good police officers who like in my district, and I have great police officers in my district, who are respected and appreciated by the residents and the block clubs. We want those officers. And so if there's reforms, and we can sit down together to have those conversations on what those reforms look like, to help the overall goal of protecting and serving, I think it's the right time. So I thank you for your leadership on this, Council President.
Thank you very much. Just to comment on the information that was out on social media. We voted on this budget that included a cut in police. Reading the comments on Facebook, we've increased it twenty million, ten million. We allowed for military-grade equipment. We cut education. Nothing is further from the truth. We've cut the police budget six point six percent over the last four years. Now, it's, there are many people that are trying to pull people in different directions. And they're pulling at us, you know, support this or support that. And my answer to them is we'll support what's right. We are being pulled in many different directions with regards to law enforcement and and the protesters and all the people that are out there on social media. And we're trying to be, we're being pulled in different directions. And at the very end, we want to be pulled to do the right thing. So we'll continue to work with law enforcement, with the community, with all of the reforms that certainly the administration is working on. We continue to support the administration on many of the reforms and the committees that we have to look at the policies. So we are taking a look at this. It doesn't have to be either or. We can have a strong police department, and we can have change and reform within the police department, and that's what many of us would like to do. So we'll continue to work to have that dialogue long after all this is over and all the emotions subside. We'll continue to work to make sure that there are some changes made. So thank you very much, Council President, for Mr. Chair? Councilmember Wingo?
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, regarding the defunding the police, I, I, I got the emails as well. I got over a thousand just since yesterday. Who's ever doing that, I mean, hey, you're doing a good job at getting, you know, the people corralled around it. But we're getting emails from people all around the world, which is a little strange. But let me just say this. When folks are talking about defunding the police, I don't think they're, and I'm hopeful that the folks in Buffalo are not suggesting dismelt of the entire police department. Defunding the police has a wide spectrum of interpretations. And my interpretation of defund the police happens to deal with reallocation of some of the funds that we use for the police. That, we can talk. But I don't think that any of our activists or advocates are advocating for in, in the city of Buffalo, who actually lives here, are advocating for us to, you know, wipe out our police department. That's, I don't think that's what we're, I don't think that's what they're asking for. So I appreciate the, the dialogue around defunding the police. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Next item.
A Councilmember, Councilmember Bolden is trying to speak.
I just wanted to be added to this resolution. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And Councilmember Brian Bolton to the resolution. Let's see. Which item are we on? Item number thirty is an adopt. Item thirty-one is an adopt. Thirty-two, mass, then, support. Repeal New York State Civil Search, right?
Yes.
Fifty-eight, Councilmember Wingo?
I'm asking that we adopt that, because we want, I know that we should send it to committee so that we can have a dialogue about it. But I think we've been talking to our community long enough since these protests have started. And I believe that we have been listening, and that is why we believe that we should show our support now for the repealing of New York State Civil Rights Law, Section fifty dash A, which protects police officers, firefighters, and corrections officers from having their personnel record of disciplinary action used in court when there should be some type of litigation. Our New York State Assembly Majority Leader, Crystal People Stokes, has already had a rally in support of repealing fifty-eight. Our governor has already spoken on repealing fifty-eight, and that if you give him some legislation, he will sign it. So we, even though we can't send this to committee, I'm asking if my colleagues could potentially adopt this now, so that once we send our resolution to the state delegation, they can see that we're also in support of repealing. And I want Buffalo to be strong and staying firm in our opposition of anyone who wants to not repeal fifty-eight, which has really enabled the behavior of a lot of officers who are bad apples when they know we can't access their personnel files, which would give us a huge indication that, not even indication, bottom line, bottom line, it would show us that they are, in fact, bad apples. So I'm hoping that we could adopt this. If I have the support of my colleagues, I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Wingo, this one does not have to go to committee. This is a resolution. It's not an actual law or ordinance, so it can be adopted right here.
Well, thank you, Gary. Well, I'm hoping that we can adopt this tomorrow, then. I'm moving that we adopt it tomorrow.
Did the Majority Leader freeze?
Yeah, he did.
Councilmember Scamming.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to thank Councilmember Wingo and some of my other colleagues who filed resolutions for tomorrow's meeting, addressing some of the problems we're facing as a city and, and quite frankly, as a nation. And for taking the initiative to look at possible reforms to policing to create a better relationship between our police department and the public. I look forward, I sincerely look forward to working with all my colleagues on the council. The administration, the administration of the Buffalo Police Department, and the leadership and membership of the PBA to effectuate some sort of change and to enact some reforms that will benefit all sides of the equation. I spoke to Councilmember Wingo earlier today about this resolution, and I told him that I had a number of questions about the repeal of New York State Civil Service, Civil Rights Law fifty-eight. And as I read more and more about it, I keep coming up with more questions. And among the many questions I have is, and it's probably the most time-sensitive and flat-out scary one to me is that whether or not after this, if this were to be repealed, whether or not and how were to be repealed, whether or not and how um the personal information of police officers, correction officers, et cetera, would be kept private. I don't think that I need to explain to anyone that allowing that information to be made public could potentially put um some of those men and women in harm's way. So um although I am very eager to discuss reforms and implement policy that will make the men and women of the Buffalo Police Department even better officers and close that gap that might exist between some of those members in the department and the public, I am, I'm gonna vote no on this resolution tomorrow. Um, I just have too many questions at the time, and I know things are moving very quickly. I'm trying to find answers to it. Um, and if I can't find those answers in the, in the interim, um, I'd be a no vote. If there were some sort of replacement legislation with, which protected that information that was gonna replace fifty-eight, that would be a different um scenario. But um, at this time and in this time crunch, I just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable and I cannot vote yes on this at this time.
This is Karen, I would just like to um say something as it relates to um councilmember Scanlon's uh um question. I think part of the concern with fifty-eight is that it is duplicative because FOIL, Freedom of Information Law, protects personnel information on the books right now. Um, and it does prevent information that can be used against um some, so uh local servants like police officers, teachers, firefighters from being exposed to the public if it's not necessary and it's not pertinent to whatever the issue is. So the um, the Freedom of Information Law, which is pretty broad, protects a very broad range of different scenarios that would not allow in sudden information to get in. And coupled with that, usually um the courts make the final determination on the introduction of information from personnel files and information that might be deemed not necessary, necessary for the issue at hand. So the judge also has the authority to make that determination. So it, there, there are already legislations that does the same thing right now, um, and fifty-eight just gives it another additional layer. Um, but it's not the only legislation over there that provides protection for um personnel information. It's just that fifty-eight prevents any information whatsoever from ever getting out there in the public once it's information that's deemed to be part of a personnel file.
Yeah. Um, thank you for that, Karen. I just, um, part of my concern is, and I understand that, is that the courts and um judges are human beings also, and um I think there are people on this council and other people throughout the community that um don't have one hundred percent faith in people all the time. So um, I just want to make sure that there's that backup. And there's other questions I have. I, I addressed some of it with councilmember Wingo when I talked this morning to him, and um I've been looking into them. So again, if, if there was some sort of replacement, um, I, I, I'd think maybe a little differently, but at this time, I, I'm still gonna be a no.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I know that the Majority Leader in her comments during the um press conference or rally um last week clearly stated that a officer's personal information would be protected. So I'm trusting her in her word because I absolutely wouldn't want an officer's personal information to be out there. You know, we, we're not foolish to um want to put our law enforcement officers, even if they've done something wrong, to be in harm's way. That's absolutely not our goal. Um, and I understand councilmember Scanlon's concerns. Um, but I'd like to be added to this. I think it's very important. And um, you know, whatever protections we can put in there to ensure that that information doesn't get out, I'm hopeful. And we can inquire um with the Majority Leader just to make certain that those things are in place to make sure um when that information comes out, it, the uninfor, the information regarding someone's address and their, who they're married to, all that information is not exposed to the public because that is unnecessary information to give to someone. It's not about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Chris Scanlon?
Yeah, um, just to follow, something else that popped into my head, you know, um, obviously, this last week has been um pretty volatile, and there's been a, obviously, some high-profile incidents and um some unfortunate things that have taken place. But um, in, as a result of one of those uh, one of those incidents, there was um an address of one of the police officers involved, an incorrect address of one of the police officers circulated all over social media, and the address was in my district. And it required, as a result, um, a police detail there to protect the street. I had residents that were absolutely terrified that maybe people were gonna come to their street cirque, seeking retribution. And so again, I'm just looking for any level of protection for that type of information that's uh possible out there.
Any other comments? Councilmember Joseph Gullumbe?
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. I have to uh echo the sentiments of uh Mr. Scanlon. Um, I spent the weekend in between listening to messages and reading the email messages that we received from thousands of people that don't live in our districts. Um, I did spend time calling lawyers, police officers, uh, people that you would consider left and right, uh liberal and conservative. And I went over uh the um repealing of the fifty-eight in Albany, and I came much like Mr. Scanlon with just as many questions when I was done. Um, I was surprised at some of my liberal friends that said that, you know, repealing is, you know, something that they would support as long as there was a replacement. Um, and I, you know, uh, lawyers in particular, and I asked them, what do you mean? And they brought up many of the same questions that Mr. Scanlon uh brought up, you know, that people could get a hold of some of this information uh using it for nefarious uh reason. And I want to make sure that our police officers, um, and I think by extension, firefighters, uh corrections officers, et cetera, are all protected from this. Um, you know, I have some questions as well, you know, about, so, you know, is this, I hate to bring up something like the SAFE Act, but if you remember a few years ago, Albany decided to enact the SAFE Act, and they did it very, very quickly. And my fear is, is that when you do something quickly, you make a lot of mistakes. And okay, you make mistakes with guns, that's one thing, but here you're making mistakes potentially with people's lives. Um, I'd like to know what the replacement is gonna be, if anything, what the actual alternatives are going to be and what the consequences are going to be. Um, you know, will there suddenly be a rush for people to look at every police officer's records? Uh, you know, will there then be miscommunication as to, well, this isn't really what my, my records were? Uh, I, I, I just think that there's a lot of questions that raises right now, and like Mr. Scanlon, if there was a repeal and a replacement, I would be much more comfortable with this because the police department in the city of Buffalo and we as councilmembers are going to do something. You know, we had been doing something and things had been moving in the right direction. Um, and we're, I think we were going in the right direction. There was a lot of things that had changed, community policing, et cetera. This is one of those things that probably I, I believe does need ultimately to change, but it needs to change for the better. It, we need to look at the unintended consequences of what could happen. And I'm concerned about, you know, all those things that Mr. Scanlon said, in particular, the safety of family members of the officers. So uh, as of right now, I would be a no vote tomorrow as well.
Councilmember Farrelittle?
Thank you very much. Um, I, first, I just want to thank councilmember Wingo for bringing this forward and also Council President Pridgen for the three resolutions that he submitted earlier. Um, we, I don't know about you guys, my computer, my city connection crashed and the city website went down. So I want to take a look at these resolutions a bit more today, but it looks like I'll be supporting all of them and may ask to, to join as co-sponsors to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, for those councilmembers that have concerns regarding the safety of the uh, the police officers, um, I support the safety of the police officers. I believe as this moves through both houses, they'll share the many concerns that you have and the doubts that you have. And as this moves forward and it's vetted and it's discussed back and forth and negotiated, I think it'll be a better amendment or repeal. Uh, so I'll be supporting this. Um, and hopefully, when it's all done and complete, it'd be a good legislation. Anybody else?
Councilmember Chris Scanlon?
Thank you, Majority Leader. Um, I'm just sitting here thinking, I think Mr. Um Gullumbe made a good point. He talked about the unintended consequences. I think we saw just earlier this year when um the very much needed um bail reform measures were taking place. We had some unintended consequences, and I, I, I'd hate to see um some quick action here lead to some unintended consequences. I don't want to use the term knee-jerk reaction because obviously the, the underlying issues have existed for quite some time, and I think we all know that, and we can all get behind that and know that there are absolute reforms that need to take place. Um, I am in no way um in this instance or in future instances when we're talking about any reforms that need to be in place, enacted, um, gonna play the role of obstructionist or anything like that. I'm extremely eager to work to put in um the proper reforms to, again, improve policing throughout our community to make um everything um better for a, a people in every section of the city. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? No other comments. Well, councilmember Wingo?
Yeah, uh, I just want to say this, uh, that uh this legislation, just so everyone knows, uh, is not, this is not the first time this has ever been attempted to repeal uh Section fifty dash A. Section fifty dash A was written in nineteen seventy-six to protect officers uh, the, 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 the spirit of the law, the intent was to protect officers' home address, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But it was not intended to protect officers who beat people. Let me just make that clear. It was not meant to protect officers and give them a layer of protection and insulate them from, from, from not being charged. Okay? That's, that was not it. And this fight uh has been going on since, uh, I believe, since the, the uh late nineties, early two thousands. So this is not something they tried to do. I just believe that the climate is, is, is ripe for us to uh, to, to move on something that could be reformative, that could be transformative right now in our community. And I appreciate the balance of my colleagues who, who feel that they could support this. And I, and, 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 and I would just hope that moving forward, um, uh, if all of our police officers lived in Buffalo, uh, maybe they would be neighbors, and they wouldn't have to worry about people not knowing where they lived. And maybe they treat people like neighbors, um, and we wouldn't have the brutality that we have so that when they walk up on a person, they see the person and not a problem. Oh, that, I'm gonna stand there. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate everyone who's supported this. Thank you again.
Is that it? No other comments? Thank you very much. What's next? Uh, thirty-three, thirty-four, approve. Number thirty-five. Farrelittle, Pridgen, Rivera, Scanlon, all of us.
Yeah, I believe we could, if we can double-check with Corporation Council, but I think since we are approving the ordinance amendment, we could receive and file this resolution. And I was also informed that the mayor will sign the ordinance amendment for immediate passage. So when we vote tomorrow at two o'clock, it will become effective immediately.
Thank you.
All right. So, so we'll just send that down to his office today. The clerk is on, Tiana. I think we would need to send it so that the mayor could sign it so that tomorrow, the version that we approve is the signed one by the mayor saying that he would like immediate passage on it.
Okay. That was a receive and file. Thank you very much. No questions, no comment. Thank you very much. Until next week, Tuesday, legislation, finance. Any other comments? That's it then. We're done.